Krishnaaya Vasudevaya Devaki Nandanaya Jananda Gopa Kumaraaya Shri Govindaya Namoh Namaha Krishnaaya Vasudevaya Harayee Paramatmane Pranata Kleashanashaya Shri Govindaya Namoh Namaha Namoh Brahmanyadevaya Go Brahmanhitayacha Jagadhhitaya Krishnaaya Shri Govindaya Namoh Namah Vamsivibushitakarat Navaneeradabhat Pitaambarat Krishnath Param Kimapitattvamahum najani Krishnath Param Kimapitattvamahum najani Gopika Jeevanasmaranam Govinda Govinda Once again we arrive at that time of the year when we celebrate rejoice that Bhagavan chose to incarnate himself as Shri Krishna Bhagavatam Annapashadly declares Krishnaustu Bhagavan Swayam enumerates all the avatars of the lord that Bhagavan had taken up until then and then says Krishnaustu Bhagavan Swayam Krishnaavadarm is extraordinary in that everything else is also Bhagavan and this is more Bhagavan than all the others all avatars are Bhagavan Krishnaavadarm is more Bhagavan more a shaapte vandathanala more Bhagavan in his discourse in 1995, the summer course Swami makes a very beautiful statement he says their name Krishna is sweeter than all other names like Rama, Hari, Narayana etc. and the name Radha is sweeter than all the other names such as Sita, Lakshmi etc. Sai Ram Sai Ram no channadakunda kuda Swami himself admits enna Krishna namam adhuriam chakare kante teepi dadisaramu kante ruchamu sweeter than sugar tastier than curds and ghee and so on is Krishna namam then another than Anurva says Jikve Shri Krishna Mantrum Jabatapasatatum Janmasaaphalya Mantrum about this avatarai everything about this avatarai is sweet and karadada valabacharya says ellam adhuram 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 adhuraadi pathair akhilam adhuram edenacholrdhodana patha aramichar he thought I will speak about some things that are sweet naadharam madhuram madanam madhuram nayanam madhuram hasitam madhuramna he started aperam bartha or madness came yamuna madhura vichima dura salilam madhura yastir madhura swastir madhura the stick that he is having in his hand is sweet and a karamba vachindraganga illana if he has got a stick of sugar cane you may say it is sweet naam virenooroom maadumeekum kol the stick with which he would herd the cows because they are it is with Krishna even the stick is sweet stickly sweet rupam madhuram his form is sweet his talk is sweet his smile is sweet his clothes are sweet the way he walks is sweet the way he looks is sweet prin ellam adhuram 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 namamo madhuram rupamo madhuram charitam abdiyana what about his tails is leelas abdina adhukamela madhuramark nobody can listen to Krishna Katha without having a big smile blossoming upon their faces ramayadam geta kuda avidudala perhaps when listening to ramayadam we may shed tears but when we listen to Krishna Katha who can remain without tears vinapashugnanath kapuman virajyeth vinapashugnanathin parikshit tells sugar tell me Krishna Katha because who will say no to Krishna Katha even a butcher will not say no upon the leelas are also extraordinarily sweet alladukamela topping up enna no upadesham Bhagavad Gita vaatun cherry udhava Gita vaatun cherry and upadesham of Krishna Krishnaavadarm left for us Krishna namam Krishna rupam Krishna leela Krishna upadesham Krishna namam abdiyana these that which gives sweetness to the tongue anikechane the other day itself I mentioned it Krishna channalip the sweetness is there aakrishnam is there in that the great aakrishnasakti attraction force of attraction is there in the Krishna namam Krishna Krishna abdiyana work nartham Krishna means hard work naabadi na illanartham na means no hard work Krishna na enna no hard work required illana sadhana you have got to do to do sadhana you have got to make your mind become convinced first that sadhana is worth doing that you must do sadhana that the world is unreal the world allanithiyam asukham we have got to get rid of this you know we have to cultivate vairagya we have to have a sharp vivekam ellam hard work and in spite of all that when you sit down to meditate yetatopikavanta yangaram Bhagavan says in the Gita even if you sit down to meditate what will happen abdiyana the indriyas will prasabham haranti manam idhe will forcibly drag the mind away you to bring the mind back abhyasena thakavanta yavairagya naja girkya tene you have got to do dhyanam through abhyasa through vairagya ellam varan even when you do that the mind strays away even rishis are finding it hard anna suguna suguna no ramma suguna no urgopi suguna got married to brindavan from samadhar village mayadha bhakta village lendu vandha konjanaidha irunda she saw Krishna only a little bit aperam Krishna left and went away to mathura anna the Krishna dhyanam she is not a rishi and Krishna dhyanam is there for all the gopikas naturally and the tradition was all the women would go to yashoda mama's house yashoda will light the first lamp in the evening they will go to yashoda's house and light their lamps and come back home Krishna jyoti nambatniyarkutame so one by one they will take turns to go and light the lamp this suguna had gone and was holding the lamp and the lamp has a little tip yeah so she holding the tip under she had gone and she was placing the wick inside the flame and as she was doing it suddenly she felt as though she saw Krishna in the flame and when she saw Krishna she lost all body consciousness all external consciousness samadhi adala what happened abdiyana unknowingly her finger entered into the flame along with the wick entirely unmindful unaware of that fact she stood there lost in Krishna Bhagavan says in the Gita even the one who is striving hard to meditate his mind is dragged away by the senses cholra senses than drag sense na enna another various senses whether it is pleasure or pain inga her half finger is burning aper how much of sensory input should have been there and nothing is happening she is standing there until somebody behind saw and dragged her out suguna what happened were you not aware na vachina I saw Krishna I saw Krishna I saw where 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 nellagopi galunkakara where where in the flame I saw audanay ellapadaram chutthukaram suguna ko kanupincharantha nama suguna ko thanjana Swami da abdila pathu pathu manasu guna ko kanupincharantha manasu guna ko kanupincharantha nama suguna ko thanjidame yaro nama suguna manasu guna awargla oru santoshaman nama suguna adhili oru vikariyas pleasure as though they have also seen Krishna nama suguna patha enna nama patha enna varu suguna saw abdiyana apri oru rupam what happens with this rupam abdiyana without any effort Krishna there is no effort required here for the mind to stay under control abhyasena thakavanta yavairagya allakavanta enakuthampur abhyasa vairagya abhyam allakavanta enak swar arjuna gopikaska no abhyasa is required enna abdi oru form abdi oru name a beautiful name that simply rolls of the tongue it is as luscious and thick as honey liya Krishna cholrdhje dona sharerathedela Krishna cholrdje it is like honey liya honey rolling in the tongue maridhaner choli pathathri you keep repeating the name with bhava you know without bhava no point with bhava when you repeat that name you will find the sweetness of that name on your tongue I kid you not it will be a real experience not a mental imagination abdi oru Krishna namam their name itself indicates there is no need for you to do work the namatli sweetness arke aper what the mind seeks is only sweetness what the tongues craves for is only sweetness sweet thane chappanana aashavat nobody says no to desert even if the stomach is full and then the dessert comes also nobody wishes to desert it they wish to partake of it enna the sweet aper apri oru sweetness is there in Krishna namam na who will not chant it adur namatli oru sweetness it delights the sense of the tongue gives sweetness to that jikwanandam pudvaanandam jikwanandam tongue bliss tangugurublis Krishna rupam na nayananandam delight to the eyes Krishna manu rupam in the in our in our tradition India will have many times I have mentioned this but I will continue to say it again and again because what to do you cannot escape this truth amongst all the various deities gods that we have got who has been most represented in the Krishnaamam Krishnaamam so many forms now you can represent machivadla only one form you can Rama abdiyana apart from holding the kothandam in his hand he cannot have any other option konjan kuda pona porudhanu badrajarathala shankachakra thoda okanandhakara vaykuntara Rama in badrajalam Rama made a little bit of exception he said that the kothandam is still there but shankachakra also is there as vaykuntara Rama otherwise Rama abdiyana painting attin cherry whether it is a painting of Rama whether it is sculptures of Rama statues of Rama ellarama will stand with his bow in hand or a postache devi abdiyana one or two tha ambalathundamana one or two tha bhagatarinin ennamana naknithundanuppo inana Swamyama she will be sitting there either she will be standing or she will be sitting or she will be in her ugara rupam Ganesham mostly nowadays only they are making Ganeshas sitting computer and all but otherwise in those days Ganesham was also not very many forms a few forms were there thirty-two forms of Ganeshanu celebrate pundva iconography or dancing Ganeshas sitting Ganeshas standing Ganeshas muriganlamo romba unu visheshangadeya abdiyana kudum maximum he will still stand what he wears alone will change if he is in parini enna he will be wearing only a kaupinam if it isn't anywhere else sirichandur na he will stand like a king but standing na shivana kakevandha no need to speak about Shiva or a or natraja and I put a Krishna nirtundamana how many representations how many forms of Krishna the flute playing Krishna enna geetopadesha Krishna enna parthasartirupamana Krishna enna govardhenagiridhari Krishna enna rasalilalakrakrishna enna go bhalabhalalunakrishna enna the crawling Krishna taverakrishna enna Krishna with the cow enna kalyanardhanakrishna enna each leela of the damodara Krishna enna every leela of Krishna has been captured and made into a painting has been captured and made into an image apri oru rupalavanyam such extraordinary capacity to attract and give pleasure to the eyes we can simply sit to close our eyes and meditate upon Krishna leela oh no 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 aper rupam leela charitrah his stories is very many different leelas the actions of Krishna the stories that he spun whether he was in mostly in brindavanam gokulathali brindavanathali Bhagavan udha brindavanabalaleelas of Krishna even later on also you can sit down and think about all the various stories how Krishna and another and the uruchinna age liye Bhagavan has packed that few years in brindavan ten eleven years of life in brindavan athakulla he has packed so many different episodes that you can keep thinking again and again and again for Krishna leela adamatramana adhukapramu money encountered the pandavas how many leelas draupadi when draupadi was crying did he not come to her rescue when durvasamah rishi threatened to come did he not come to their rescue abdiyana oru redathri minda vanavasam also everywhere the Krishna Katha is you know intertwined so many different leelas of Krishna one can sit and meditate upon those leelas also manobiramam shrottra manobiramam when you listen to Krishna Katha the ears are pleased with mind is pleased heart is pleased seeing Krishna's form our eyes are pleased taking his name our tongues is pleased and right at the end ultimately Bhagavan udha upadesham there cannot be a greater text in our entirety of sanadana dharma than shimad Bhagavad Gita apri equal chalano mana bhagavatam rendu Krishna napatitham and equal grantham mana shimad bhagavatam shimad Bhagavad Gita bhagavatam Krishna swarupam Bhagavad Gita Krishna vani Krishna's words and Krishna's form no matter how many puranas you go and study no money no matter how many upanishads you go and study what is there in the Gita you will not find anywhere you don't need to go and searching anywhere else everything is present great detail la Bhagavad Gita la Bhagavan has said so much Krishna mandhey jagatguru mana Krishna nakta nicholramari yarkunchadaliyata Krishna alone is being referred to as jagatguru liya Rama mandhey jagatguru mana shannama vairaya rava the jagatguru Krishna mandhey jagat for Krishna upadesham and ultimately what is that upadesham of Krishna abdiyana it all comes back again to the name the form and the leelas ayana sarvadarman paritijaja maam yeekam sharanam maraja ultimately what is Krishna teaching to simply surrender me you love me manmanabhaba madbhakto madhyaji maam namaskaru maam ee vishyasi sattiantae pratijanee priyosime sarvadarman paritijaja maam yeekam sharanam maraja ahantva sarvabha babyo moksha isha the two shlokas right after one after the other they come after entire Gita has been delivered arjuna choliachi arjuna have told you everything asheshena ellajuli time have covered everything now do as you please ete ete tata kuru now do what you want abdi choliachi blavarkin choli mudichachi Krishna has said even that much having said that much arjuna is now ready okay fine finished I am going to get up discourse mudinjaachi ini may hari bajana vinadaark so all done and dusted abdiyana partha mudileverkum manasu varla Krishna is not satisfied kai mudichthom arjuna wait one last thing I will tell you if you read the Bhagavad Gita you will find why did I read the rest because after saying arjuna you do as you please and channadakaparam Bhagavan catches out of arjuna and says but one last thing apigukhyam gukyath gukyathama but now I will reveal the greatest secret the most secret of all secrets eighteen the chapter la right at the end Bhagavan cholru sixty-five shlokas mudinja kapramu enavacholru athakulla ellajuli mudichhi he himself admits I have told you everything that is to be told nothing left nothing is left behind anymore choli padichindi illa ni romba priyanenak you are very very dear to me adeni ipda realise punnyo enemo padam padam thonithanak you are actually more dear to me than what I thought you to be based on what I initially thought I gave you all that nonsense but because you are so dear to me you forget all that I will tell you now something but so many shlokas he has gone on and on rattlebani budichuptha karashila he says but arjuna now I will tell you the essence athaklia choli padado why didn't you start with that abdiyana arjuna would not have been ready for it by the time Krishna is arjuna thonith thonda thani vattapeesina nee once Mahatma was giving a discourse on the Bhagavad Gita eighteen days Bhagavad Gita discourse nekya arrange paniyathana they had organized somewhere aper he was giving the discourse and while giving the discourse he was watching and noticing all the reactions of all the people who were sitting there and there were two people who were crying their eyes out throughout the discourse every day discourse two hours right from the starting they are crying till the end and then after eighteen days discourse is over completed final day enki he was being honored shalallam poti dakshinalam kudutha malellam poti everything they were doing but he said this honor is given to me for telling but I also have to I also wish to honor two people who have listened to this discourse which such utmost prema and bhakti they could stop crying I wish to call them upon call upon them to come to the stage yarinnu partha ladies section la or amma gent section la or aad there is one woman in the lady said other one was on the gent side please come up audanayava namna na na you know the usual no who me yes yes you 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 the third one there yes they came up all the people are wonderstruck organizers are wondering who are these two people we have never taken notice of them could have given them VIP seating if they were so special ellam but next time we better give all of those things so these two people come up but the lady was there ladies first liya and inala varindha Mahatma looked at the lady and said amma I have been noticing you cried so much do you want to share with the audience some few words what was your experience of the Gita channa dhamma channa Swami I don't know all that I didn't listen to anything then why were you crying the book of Gita that you bring is tied with a black string when I saw that string I was reminded of the string that my late husband wore around his waist daranakayarnu chalva in India there was a tradition how it is gone men would wear a black thread around their waist chaavitangavichikathan komanagamnatha takatikirtuka paduka koman alla agdamaena kaupinam has to stand ellaya the black thread will be there and the kaupinam will go black thread my husband used to wear every time I looked at this book I was reminded of my husband's waist and a water waist water absolute utter waste for eighteen days he has been saying you are not the body if I get the attachment to the body my husband died six months ago but whenever I saw this thread I was reminded of him so I couldn't stop crying alas so he was sorely disappointed he turned to this man generally ladies were more devoted they cry wife Gita maybe his wife's name is boss Gita and she also died six months ago so he is crying Gita Gita yemba you say something romba hesitantabhayindante chunnar you say a few things what did you learn you know Swami I didn't hear anything mahatma thought no to self never come back to this place again for discourse what kind of a place is the two who are sitting and crying both say I have not heard anything I have not heard anything but the man continued the man said but when you started the discourse and you told us in the first day about how Krishna was on the chariot as the chariot driver the chariot here and arjuna was sitting behind and Krishna I could only picture Krishna turning his head back his neck back to talk to arjuna to give this entire discourse and he only thought that coming back again and again to me was for such a long time my lord had turned his head and spoken what was wrong with that arjuna could he not have gotten down and listened to Krishna how much my Krishna's neck would have acheedna I cried aper this mahatma said aha dhanyosmi anughrithosmi apa you may not have heard the Gita but you have recognized and realized the meaning of Gita what Gita has to offer you have grasped that already you don't have to listen to the discourse you know what is that that we have to grasp from Krishna zupadesha right at the end after having said everything Krishna kachadolda varjuna and he says I will give you this aper choriindranene arjuna also is now so tenderized by Krishna's words for so long Krishna has also looked back and spoken to him with such a detail answering all of his questions so much compassion padu na auri kibertu Krishna when his heart melted Krishna's heart melted and the kshanaman Krishna's heart melted so much Krishna caught hold of him and said I thought I won't say this to you but you have convinced me I have to tell you you have completely won over me and all I have to tell you the secret enna secret abdi enna secret no rajavidya rajagukhiyayogam chuniye ninth chapter of Gita is called rajavidya rajagukhiyayogam the great royal secret and this is more royal than royal secret this is divine secret the royal secret is the divine secret this can be given only to bhaktosi me sakha teeva priyosi me you are very dear to me therefore I am telling you this arjuna enna the abdi enna chalaporey what is it na manmanabhaba madbhakto madhyaji maam namaskuru manmanabhaba enne enna think about me alone let your mind be Krishna mayam madbhakta become my devotee madhyaji sacrifice everything for me maam namaskuru and fall at my feet do namaskaram to me give everything up over to me idha Krishna nu di ultimate teaching Krishna's namam Krishna's rupam Krishna's leela are all so that without effort we can accomplish this Krishna without any Krishna without any hard work so that we may become manmanabhaba madbhakto madhyaji maam namaskur Adukuthaam raraahoda varankrishna. He gives the teaching, he also has to have the capacity to back it up. Lea. Manmanabhavana, iman bhagathukisai kambarindana. Ondrukannodarindana. Iman bapa, bala booshumarindana. Lea. So sweet, so beautiful. Amrini na naturally our mind can gravitate towards. Yedhaanatthiya ha sandavanaha. The way the rivers naturally flow towards the ocean, our mind also can naturally flow towards Krishna. Enna apri irkane krishna. Lea. Vamsivibhushitakarat, navaneeradabhat. Pitaambarat, aruna bimba phaladaroostat. Purneendusundaramukatena. How is Krishna's face? Na purne hindu marisundaramarka. Like a full moon. It is as beautiful as the full moon. No matter how many times we have seen the full moon and the moon arises on a full moon day, everybody wishes to see the moon. Lea. The pakada moona. How many moons we have seen? Ana, the moona pakano. Or coolness arka. Sashi vaada nammanachalro. Or coolness is there, or calmness is there, or beauty is there. Something that captivates our heart is there and the moon. Pridi moona pakalo. Where there is darkness all around, the moon comes and sheds its light and brightens up the sky. Here does not the sun do? Amrini, yes, but you cannot see the sun. Sun is also like that. Ana, you cannot see the sandam parabram. Sandam parabram. How is the sun? Amrini, it is shining so much that nobody can even look at it. Adi yappri irukunna, wallanchana, adanamam, arupam. Amrini. No form. It has a form and you cannot see the form. Adenala no form. About what does the sun do? It reflects itself onto the surface of the moon and then shines like that. Alia, upon the parabramam ennabandradana. What does parabramam do? Krishna chandrana, it is shining at us. Anadha chandramamshatalaparundam Bhagavan. Rahmachandra suuryamshatalavanda krishna chandramamsham. Bhagavan took incarnation in chandramamsha. And Bhagavan is chandranmarudanirka. Sharachandranamadri. And Bhagavan apri jamman. So cool and calm and tranquil. It attracts all minds to him. Akrishana ka kendra krishna hai. Per part undu. Akrishana ka kendra krishna hai sundaratham. Rasikendra krishna hai. Akrishana ka kendra, he is the center of all attraction. Naturally minds. Anadha oru krishnaindruna. Atthana gopi ekadam, all the gopis left everything and came rushing towards him. All the cows left everything and came running towards him. The calves left everything and came running towards them. The gopi ladies left everything and came running towards him. The gopalas came running towards him. Ardham varla. Even the forest animals came to him. Yengepona, even when he was driving the chariot in Kurukshetra bhumi, eli enemies tamao. Hritavati Ayurakshna, abdingrar Vishma. Vishma says, Krishna, chummal, this Arjuna fellow struck a real bargain having you as the charioteer. You know, he didn't have to do any work at all. When Krishna jaljaljal, when Krishna was driving the chariot, what would Krishna do? Amrini, he had one, in a bad habit. His eyes never stayed still. The roving eyes. Rumba roving eyes. Alayum vidhihald. From one end to the other end, it will go. With eyes itself, he will speak many languages Krishna. Adenala, from end to end, his eyes will sweep through the entire battlefield, taking everybody in their range of vision. And whoever saw those eyes will become so enraptured by the eye, they will not even know how to fight back. Adukaparichuma elangolamandetha. He'll be standing there like dummies, ready to be chopped down. And knowing that Vishma says, even Ashanta potna. Did this fellow, hey, ennagonna, the indepasangala kunnu modiyana? These fellows have been able to kill the stalwarts like us. Ni enn, what did you do? Amrini. Ayurakshna hritavati, with your eyes, you took away our life spans. Even the enemies were caught up in the beauty of Krishna. That is how he was able to kill so many Asuras. So quickly. Ramarala rumba chadda viddhampannarpatela. Gumbu villalavichidu viddhammanarli. He had to learn how to do. Arjuna krishna ennagathanam guru gulamee paulapapa. Our Krishna did not even go to Guru Gula. He was still growing up. Ramarala poi vasti eventu Guru Gula, vasti start autumn. Ella adilyum danur vedanishna, nishnataha. Abdingrar Valmi. He learned everything. Adhulai especially danur vedam, he was very, very proficient in. He learned everything, then he entered first. Koldadukatakataka. He killed Tataka, began his debut with her. Krishna no, no, nothing, baby. Adukulaputhana avasarama undutapav. Tatakiyada waitpanna. Tataki was willing to wait till Rama turn twelve. Putana pananala hal. Twelve days alor and then putana came rushing. Vina bhagathuk. Enna vana, what did he need? No training, he was required. Enna, Ayurakshna hriti. Ava ennabanaa. Bathan de. Trinavrata. Deenukasura, vakasura, ellaa. They were all very strong fellows. They could have at least put up a fight. I am not saying that they would have overcome Krishna anyway. Obviously, they will have to be defeated. But at least they could have put up a little bit of a more fight than what they were able to. You know, even a Partha, when they looked at him, they have lost everything and then he simply bashed them up and finished the story. He was one-sided fighter. One-sided fight. Undue advantage he had of them. You know, rupam apri. The form was so enchanting and charming. Name kekavu vanda. Name was so sweet. Name was sweet, form was sweet. Abo, manmanabhavana, why can our mind is not naturally go towards? Itaniam poradan, as though all of this is not enough. He came with an extraordinarily magnetic power. Ma arunachalathachalva. Gandham anichalva. Arunachalas referred to as a magnetic mountain. And Krishna no magnet. Krishna is a great magnet, mind magnet. Mind chittachoraanana danichalro. Who else is called chittachoraachal? Lea, who else can be called chittachiri? Ramothanada chittachoraanichal. Amrini, apriye he steals the mind away. If you get interested, involved in Krishna, amrini, go pikas say, whenuddhava comes carrying a message for the go pikas. And Nindastuti unark. The go pikas very angry with Krishna because he left. At least they thought he will come back. He didn't come. He is sending message through somebody else. And rumba gomandut. Nanga apri vaitamam. Ni aaryavutti, anaki tagvalchodrapla itemanangala. Neeravandashonnaen. Amrini, komaamalak. They were initially very angry. Adenala, they start by scolding Krishna touddhava. And the Krishna na. Krishna na. Don't talk to us about Krishna. Yeah, enna chinna. Avanambi, athramer kettubeta drima. Bahavohihanga ka vikshucharyam charanti. Krishna na, apranagaila votadutun kandupitak. They were so caught up in the spell of Krishna, they left home, heart, wife, children. They went vikshucharyam, vikshucharyam charanti. With a bowl in hand, they went begging. Ella, thatu touch. They became vikshus. Krishna vikshusella. You know, that is the power with which he can captivate our minds. If you allow yourself to be captivated, within seconds Krishna will captivate. Agaparav, we don't have to worry about. Enna vana, adu undu. Swami says, Yashodhamma courtword of Krishna and she said, Krishna, when there is so much butter and curd and milk in our house, why do you go and steal from other people's houses? Why do you go and steal from their houses? All the gopis came and complained. Aba Yashodhamma courtword of Krishna, nambatla, na koraya. Do I not feed you enough? Then why do you unnecessarily go and steal? And they are asked, here itself, I will give you more. For Krishna chunnar, it is tastier there. That butter is tastier than this butter. Yashodha, kebri rukum. Generally, all children say, my mother's cooking is the best. My mom is the best cookum. Krishna chunna, go pikas butter is better than your butter. Abha Swami says, the reason why? Go, Yashoda gave it because my child Krishna nuu kudthan. And a go pikas had their butter with no trace of selfishness in it. Therefore Krishna himself broke into their houses and forcibly stole that butter away. Hatena. Krishna kathulachalva hatena. Gopavadu shatena. And ennabana, what did he do? No, forcibly he entered into the houses of the go pikas to steal their butter. You know, their butter was so tasty and delicious for him. Enna, what was delicious about it? Absolutely pure butter. Pure butter na, additives eduunlamya. Desi ghishalva, shuddhi desi ghii. And maris shuddhi butter, desi butter. Shuddhi is not because of that. What is the shuddhata in it? What is the purity in it? Na aham mamam is not there. Krishna, 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 Krishna alone was there. Eye and mind were not there. Krishna, Krishna, Krishna alone was there. While churning also Krishna namam, only Krishna chintana only. Remembering him, they did that work. Thinking about him, singing his glory, chanting his name, they did that work. Therefore the entire butter was permeated with prema. When that prema was kept there, no matter where it was kept, how hidden it was kept, how high it was hung, did not matter to him. He overcame all obstacles so that he could enjoy that prema, the form of that butter. But Swami says, if you also keep your heart like that, the butter of your heart like that, then why will Bhagavan not come break into your house called your heart and steal and eat that butter, that prema? On the one hand, he makes it so easy for us to be entranced by him. If we take the slightest effort and make ourselves pure of this ahankara and mamakara. Bhagavan himself will come and then manmanabhavan chunnanulaya. He says, make yourself filled with me. He will come and fill us on his own. Madmanabhava madbhakta, become my devotee. Madbhakta na ennannam. Have anuragthi attachment only towards me. Turn all your affection only towards me. Put up with everybody else, but when it comes to me, become excited. Be excited when it is about me. Manushanabati excitement. Avada pakaporeme, ivada pakaporeme. Ella vanda. Bhagavan alone should give rise to that constant state of exhilaration. Enna, nothing else should excite us. Adukuthaam bhakti ne peru. That is what is called bhakti. That is what we've been seeing so far in Bhakti Sutra also. Abha, when you are constantly thinking about Bhagavan, when you constantly think about Krishna and that alone excites you, that alone makes you so filled with joy. Amrini, nada bhakti ne peru. Madbhakta ha. Madhyaji. Yaji, amrini, do yegnya for me. Mad, become madhyaji. Be somebody who was sacrificed for me. Sacrifice na. Achanene, many times I've mentioned this, I think, that somehow whoever came up with the word, English translation for yegnya as sacrifice, was divinely inspired and ordained to do so. You know, that is what it is, the sacrifice. Yegnya is called sacrifice. And sacrifice na doesn't mean you make a yegnya kundam and then offer things and sacrifice things into it. Adhulai sacrifice. Ennadana, tadarpita akila charata. Whatever it is that you do, if you do it with Krishna smriti, Krishna, Krishna's memory, Krishna's name, it has been offered to him. It has been deemed offered. It is deemed offered. In fact, it will be deemed accepted also. Tadarpita akila charata. Whatever it is you do, you do for his pleasure. Bhagavatprityartham. Krishna. Unna, agudan anakevanda. You don't even have to think about Krishna's pleasure. Krishna, chunnaporo. You just say that name and do the work itself. Kriavasane prayatasmaretha. Shukasasindi. Vitiaskandam itself. Until you get that kind of one point and bhakti from which you will not move away at all, where Krishna smriti is always with you, memory of Krishna is constant with you. Until you reach that stage, what should you do? Right now, we are not so mature. So when we start a task or activity, we get so caught up and carried away. You know, we forget Krishna. We are doing a task, whatever it is, maybe your work, maybe at home, whatever it may be. You are so engrossed in it that you forget. Bhagavan. Shukasas, no, no problem. Until you reach the state, what should you? Kriavasane prayatasmaretha. At the end of the task, you think about Krishna. At the beginning of a task, you think about Krishna. At the end of the task, you think about Krishna. If you keep doing this, then during the task also, you will learn to think about Krishna. Another Krishna, Krishna, Krishna. Whenever we are, the puja bandrala batherkela. Have you seen these people who do puja at your house? If they have to give some, while chanting the mantra, if they have to give some instruction. There will be a break in the mantra. Adenala, in order to purify it, while they says Krishna, 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 should they start again. I mean, between the gaps, allah, Krishna mantra should be there. Krishna namam should be there. Vise Krishna, 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 everything is rectified. Abha, as we are doing our tasks, even if we cannot remember him while doing it, doesn't matter. Ebla alovensparungo. Look at how much discount has been given to us. Doesn't matter, after you finish it, remember Krishna. But tadarpita akila charata, madhyaji, maam namaskuru. Offer yourself to me. Namaskaram. Amrini, you know, amrini, zudana namaskaram. Namaha, adha namaskaram. It is a state of not me, not for me, not for me, not for me. That state of not for me is called namaskaram. And the namaste. When you do namaskaram, what do you say? You say namaste. Namaha astute. Not for me, but for you. Not for me, but for you. Namahate. Not for me, but for you. And the namostute. Ennichalva. Or namona mah. Namaha, namaha, we say it twice. और नमो नमः 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 विजय ट्वाइस नमो नमः नॉट फॉर मी नॉट फॉर मी फॉर यू फॉर यू फॉर यू नमस्कृत माम नमस्कृत ना नॉट फॉर मी नॉट फॉर मी बट फॉर यू बट फॉर यू बट फॉर यू एवरीथिंग डेट यू एक्सपीरियंस अलसो बर कृष्ण फॉर कृष्ण यू आर ईटिंग ना कृष्ण का गोविंदन यू आर ईटिंग फूड फॉर होम गोविंदा से क्या रिटिंग पर कृष्ण आयर रिटिंग अब एन्ना इंजॉय लाइफ इंजॉय लाइफ एवरीथिंग इस फॉर कृष्ण एनीको वर्ण चलूट अपने इंजॉय लाइफ फैकेट के बाद कृष्ण डिड नॉट वर्क व्हाइल इंजॉय अलसो कृष्ण स्मृति इस देयर अब डिन बाय ऑल मींस देयर इस नो नीड फॉर एनी सेंस कंट्रोल फॉर यू आफ्टर डेट एल्ला कृष्ण ने का पढ़ना मैं नी इंजॉय पंडर इट इस नॉट फॉर यू लिए इट इस फॉर कृष्ण एल्ला कृष्ण ने कहा ना बात तुमको ना इफ यू श्री जयंती जन्म श्टमी इसे डी वन फेस्टिवल वेयर वी मेक सो में स्वीट्स एंड सो में डिलीशियस फूड्स इन अवर हाउसहोल्स अलावा श्री जयंती इसे डी मोस्ट इंपॉर्टेंट फेस्टिवल फॉर नो अदर फेस्टिवल वी मेक सो में थिंग्स इवन दीपावली इस डी बिग डील ना तू थिंग्स विल बी मेड अवार्ड था ओर स्वीट ओर कार मैक्सिमम वाला था लेखियों नरुकुम श्री जयंती अर्थम ऊपर चीड़ा बल्लच चीड़ा तट मुरुक अपर नाडिसलम अकार वाडिसलम अकार वाडिसल एन्ना अपर नवनीता मैंने अपर चुके वाला ना चलना चाप जरीकर्ता कुरु चुके वाला अप्पा मैंने वड़ा एन्ना सी हिस्सू है ना सो में डिशेज आर मेड इफ यू लेट आउट अब नो अदर फेस्टिवल वारंट सो में डिशेज एक्सेप्ट कृष्ण से यू थिंक अबाउट मी मेक फॉर मी इंजॉय योर लाइफ ग्राम कृष्ण नोडी ये तत्व में वाला था कृष्ण आर तत्व इस कृष्ण आर यू इंजॉय इट एवरीथिंग नाइसली ये ना कुर्तर चाप आई हैव टोल्ड यू नो दिस इसकॉन हरे कृष्ण मूवमेंट ला इफ यू हैव एवर इटन इन डी फूड इन इसकॉन टेंपल प्रसादम महाप्रसादम इफ यू इटन यू विल नो हो टेस्टी इट इस लिए यस ऑल इसकॉन टेंपल चाप ना यह मैं सांप लिए एना कृष्ण प्रसादम लिया अन्या आई हर्ड फ्रॉम सम्बड़ी हुआ डी वन गोन एंड हेल्प वॉलंटीयर्ड इन डी अर्किचन एवरीथिंग इस फ्राइड एंड घी दे डोंट उसे ऑयल एवरीथिंग इस फ्राइड एंड घी ओन्ली लिए एवरीथिंग इस मेड विथ घी यह नथिंग यह आज डिम यू आर उसिंग सो मच घी व्हाय ओन्ली घी इट इस फॉर कृष्ण इट हस तू बी डी बेस्ट इट इस फॉर कृष्ण इट हस तू बी डी बेस्ट नमका चाप नो वी आर नॉट डूइंग इफ यू आर डूइंग फॉर अवर्सेल्स विल से ओह नो 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 डोंट उसे डेट उसे डी लो फैट थिंग नो नो उसे दिस उसे नमक ना बट हु आर यू कुकिंग फॉर इन डी एंड वी आर कुकिंग फॉर अवर्सेल्स ओन्ली डेट इस वही वी इट नो फैट लो फैट अब तक कृष्ण नक इस फॉर कृष्ण अन्या अब डी चाप टायर ना सो एवरी डे इफ यू फ्राई डीप फ्राई एवरीथिंग इन घी एंड इट व्हाट विल हैव हैव दे डू वैन थिंग इन इसकॉन इफ यू लुक आते डी कैलेंडर देल बी फास्ट एंड फीस्ट फास्ट एंड फीस्ट विश्वनाथ डिसएपीरेंस डे फास्ट अपर यारो बलरामा अपीरियंस डे फास्ट कृष्ण डे फास्ट राधा श्टमी फास्ट राधा's फादर श्टमी फास्ट राधा's मदर ग्रैंडमैदर्स नवमी फास्ट एल्ला तक फास्ट यारो परंदा फास्ट फोन ऑफ फास्ट यू लुक आते डी कैलेंडर अपीरियंस डे फास्ट डिसएपीरियंस डे फास्ट एल्ला तक फास्ट 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 बट दें व्हेन यू फीस्ट यू फीस्ट प्रॉब्लम फास्ट एंड फीस्ट ओन्ली फीस्ट इस डी प्रॉब्लम अब ड्रॉप डी ई यू आर ओके ब्यूटी ऑफ फास्ट एंड फीस्ट इस यू ऐड डी ई तू फास्ट इट बिकम्स फीस्ट यू ड्रॉप डी ई फीस्ट बिकम्स फास्ट इकारम दाने एल्ला तक इकार द पोटा शवा बिकम्स शिवा इकार द पोटा फास्ट बिकम्स फीस्ट भगवान लॉजिक एन्ना ना चाप डे इंजॉय लाइफ फास्ट एंड फीस्ट इस ओके इफ यू डोंट फास्ट अब डिन ना व्हाट विल हैव हैव यू विल रिच हिम फास्ट सो यू कीप ईटिंग एवरीथिंग डीप फ्राइड एंड घी एंड नॉट फास्ट यू विल रिच हिम फास्ट अपर वाइक उंडा तक तिरनाटा लंगर चुट्ठू अंग पायो का था अंग एन्ना त्रिप्पा कार अर्ज़ल चाप नो प्रॉब्लम इफ यू गो देयर यू कैन इट योर हार्ट्स कंडोन नो नीड तू फास्ट अट ऑल ओन्ली फीस्ट नथिंग सर्वकर्म भगवत प्रीति अर्थ डेट इस वही एंड ऑफ एवरीथिंग एन्ना कृष्ण आर पनमस्तु नो मैटर व्हाट वी विनी संध्या वंदनम विनी कृष्ण सर्वम् श्री कृष्ण आर पनमस्तु यू चांट सम श्लोका एंड डी एंड श्री कृष्ण आर पनमस्तु यू डू अन पूजा एंड डी एंड सर्वम् श्री